All right, I would like to call the meeting to order for the Nisswa Planning Commission Board of Adjustment for Tuesday, September 2, 2025. Roll call, please. Josh Young.
Gary Harris.
John Taylor.
Dave Reese.
Maggie Wendler.
Stephen Timblin.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are none.
Being none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I'll second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Next to approve the meeting minutes for August 5, 2025, are there any additions or deletions to those minutes?
There are none.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Uh, let's see. Do we approve the minutes, or did they skip over that? Okay. Uh, next item is open forum. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to speak towards something not on the agenda this evening? All right, hearing none, we'll move on. Moving on to public hearings, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So move.
Second, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right. First item is variance application 024-25 to obtain a variance to expand a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure within the Linden Lakeshore Residential Zoning District. Subject property is located at 3945 West Linden Boulevard, PID 28220571. Owner applicant Bunton family, Rob Rosinski. Is the applicant or, okay, if you can come to the table or the lectern, whatever you want. And then state your name for the record.
Uh, Robert Rosinski.
All right. Stephen, your staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. We have before us a variance application to expand a residential structure to have a second story. Um, survey provided by the applicant shows the structure at 9.3 feet from the closest property line, defining it by statute as a non-formity, so the variance would be required to expand it upwards. Um, we have, in my analysis here, um, the landowner owns both this parcel and the parcel across the encroached lot line. Uh, the existing and proposed impervious are proposed to remain at 25.2% slightly over the maximum, so that would also be included in the variance ask. Um, the applicant also provided a stormwater management plan, inclusive of a shoreline no-mo buffer that would be implemented as required by the ordinance. Structure expansion itself meets all other setbacks such as the ordinary high-water mark road right away. Um, and then there's only a minor amount of vegetation alteration required to facilitate the upward, um, as discovered during the site visit with the applicant and the landowner. That's a really a concise analysis that I have for this particular application.
Can you just give us a brief overview of the, uh, project?
Yes, uh, so, um, essentially, we don't want to change the footprint of the house at all, um, any of the, uh, um, like Stephen said. Sort of looked for the. Impervious, thank you. Uh, none of the pervious will change. Um, essentially, we just want to add four dormers to the already upper level, um, of the, of the building, just to create some, um, bedroom space and, and some egress opportunities up there. Um, so very minimal, um, living space addition. Um, yeah, it, I guess that was, that's pretty much it. We, I approached Stephen essentially just because it was altering the roof lines, not thinking that it was even going to be needing a variance. Um, but then, you know, we discovered that the latest survey wasn't, uh, 9.3 feet. Um, there was an older survey back down in 2000 that did not, uh, state any specific distances, other than it showed that it was within the building envelope, but, um, obviously, that was an older survey and, and, and whatnot, so. So, yeah, so that's essentially it. Um, is essentially just trying to go up with it, pretty minimal, um, make any improvements that we have to as far as stormwater, like, you know, like the, I believe it's the west side that, uh, we would add gutters and control the water that would go off to that side that is not there right now, but. But anyways, that's, that's about it. Pretty simple. I wish I had a better explanation of why it's a hardship, but it really, I really don't, other than just the 9.3 feet.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? You can come to the desk here. And then state your name, and then make sure there's a little green light on there that's on, it's on.
Uh, good evening. My name is Tom Jensen, and I live at 3933 West Linden Boulevard, so I am the next-door neighbor on the west side of, of the Bunton property. And, um, we've been there 60 years now, and I remember when that house was built, the original owners who, that, one of the things they really regretted was that it did not have good airflow north to south because of the attached garage on the back. I think in addition to providing a little bit better living space for this, I think having the dormers on the roof will help create better airflow, so that it's just going to be a more functional space as well as a little bit larger. It's not changing the impervious coverage, so we're fully supportive of this addition.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'll close public comments. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Any, how about, you, you own the property, the Buntons own the property on the other side, on the east side, is that correct?
Yes.
So, okay. Obviously, no neighbor problem there, so.
Okay, um, because this is a variance request, we have to go through a list of questions, which is filled out in the application, um, so we'll, we'll answer these questions as we go when we go through the, um, the motion. Okay? Uh, so the first question is, is the variance in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance and comprehensive plan?
It, it is.
I would agree. It's a.
Because of, uh, there's no change in the footprint or the setbacks at all. There's no problem with this.
Okay. Uh, two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the City of Nisswa Court of Ordinances? Yes or no?
Yes, same as, same answer as number one.
I agree. Three, is a need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the property owner? Obviously, it's an existing structure, and it's just being built on, nothing is being changed. Uh, we're just changing something with the, the roof, adding the dormers.
Was a technical problem with the survey, so.
Right.
Uh, I'd, adding, adding to the use of the property without altering the existing setbacks, I think that's good.
I agree. Will the issuance of a variance maintain the essential character of the locality?
It will. It will add to the aesthetics and the use of the home, and it matches the neighbors, neighbor house to the west that the gentleman that spoke has got second, second story, uh, living quarters there.
I would agree. Does the need for the variance involve more than economic considerations?
It does. It, again, it improves the use of the existing property and home, and the survey problem was not caused by him.
All right, I would agree. Uh, I don't believe there's any other pertinent findings, so with that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve a variance application 024-25, uh, to obtain a variance to expand a pre-existing non-conforming residential structure in the Linden Lakeshore Residential. Uh, this would be all according, according to the findings of fact that show in the planning, uh, in the, in the report, and, uh, the, there's two, two conditions shown in the, in the report as well, the potential condition, so it'll be subject to those.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Good luck with the project.
All right, thank you very much.
Next item is conditional use permit application 025-25 to obtain a conditional use permit for the construction of a new commercial structure with a dwelling unit above a commercial use within the highway business zoning district. Subject property is located at to-be-determined Commons Drive, PID 2814063. Owner applicant Marthaller, D M Trust, Kent Marthaller is applicant here. Yeah. You can go to the podium or the table, whichever you prefer. Stephen, your staff report.
Thank you, Chair and Commission. So we have before us a conditional use permit for the construction of a new structure on a vacant lot, zoned highway business. Um, physical address would be to be determined upon application for an E911 address point, uh, Commons Drive. Um, conditional use permit application is for the construction of a 74 by 112, um, which is an 8,288 square foot commercial structure. Um, in the application, it was listed, the use of the structure would be, um, having, having multitude of uses, um, landscaping, detailing, storage, motor vehicle sales, and snow removal, uh, with a dwelling unit above the commercial use. Um, also included in the architect plans was a 10 by 74, um, square foot awning. That, my analysis would be that, uh, this is an allowed use for a few different reasons in our land use chart. Let me go to that on our. Here. So I have the right application on the screen for everyone. Um, so this would be a business slash commercial retail use in the highway business zoning district. Um, so there's just conditional use permit pathway for that. Motor vehicle sales is also a conditional use allowed in the highway business district. Warehousing, um, if, if alluded to in the storage aspect of the application, would be an allowed use. Um, dwelling units above commercial uses in the highway business is also listed as a conditional use permit, so. Kind of multitudinous for, um, the uses that are proposed with this. Um, the application materials did also depict a future expansion that is not completely supported by the submission materials, being that there's no architect-certified plans that submitted for the expansion, the proposed, I think it was a 74 by 40 addition. My interpretation of that is that if that is included in what the applicants are seeking today, that we would maybe want to table and require additional submissions for that, if, if that is the goal to go through in this public hearing. Alternatively, that could be something that we can talk about through a subsequent CUP application to facilitate that, uh, expansion in the future. This commercially zoned property has neighboring residentially zoned property beyond the eastern half of the north property line. Ordnance has screening requirements, so that's where that becomes impactful from a commercial use to a residential use. Um, there's, there happens to be in this proposal, um, hundreds and hundreds of feet of wooded land and a wetland between that, and so I don't imagine that that's going to be a hurdle to, um, the applicant in this case. The proposed first floor elevation given off of the survey, um, is based on the lightarm materials at 1,230, uh, feet for the elevation. The wetlands were estimated by the survey, it seems. Um, delineation was not performed prior to the application, and the condition was proposed. Um, we do have on the survey a proposal for the well location. The orientation of the building, um, depicted by the survey conflicted with the elevation drawings and plan set, uh, drafted by the applicant's architect. I did put in a bold there that we would need clarification required. Uh, for example, the west elevation showed a shorter end of the, um, structure with the two large garage doors, the south being the longer version with the, being the awning area. And my question would be, how is this structure, um, specifically oriented on the survey versus the architectural renderings? I suppose we can open that up for response if you guys happen to know. I know Kent is on virtually too, I can see him there as well, and I think he's unmuted, if you wanted to weigh in.
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the orientation of the, um, the overhead doors of the shop would be facing south, the double doors?
Okay. So west elevation would become south elevation, is that correct? Looking at it from the south?
Um, say that one more time.
So then, the west elevation would become the south elevation if you're peering at the, at the structure from the south?
I believe, oh, I see, yeah, from the, yes, that would be correct, yep. I see that now, which you're talking about, yep.
Thanks. Uh, let's see, I can pull it up on the screen here as well. And then, the south elevation as shown there, I, given the drawings, I'll imagine that that would become the east elevation and so on.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I can have Travis change these too, of course, and submit them so they're correct.
All right. Um. Um, let me go back up to my staff analysis. Uh, the proposed structure was proposed to have onsite septic. Um, we do have attached to this, um, packet item, a memo from Public Works that states that the structure must be connected to the forest main on Hazelwood Drive as required by ordinance. Um, and onsite septic would not be allowed without a variance in this case. Would that be something that you guys concede to as connecting the city sewer?
Was the question, was the question, are, are we in agreement to connect to the sewer, is that the question?
It is.
Um, I, no, it's, we would not, because it's cost prohibitive.
So that would, uh, the notion of not connecting would be against Chapter 28 of our ordinance, where it states that it shall be required to connect. In my opinion, that would be requisite of a variance. And subsequent approval, so that'd be a separate application for public hearing. Or a table of this, potentially?
Okay, we, if I would have known, if I would have, yeah, we could have submitted that had I known that that was a requirement, but, um, we would need to complete a variance at that point. I mean, if the, if, if the city road project or whatever, you know, ended up coming to fruition, and, you know, the sewer was ran through and a stub out, I mean, I, I would agree to hook to the city sewer at that point.
So the, the baggage road element, there was another notice, note that I had in my staff report here. Um, the property was a subject location for proposed baggage road, also mentioned in the Public Works memo. City engineers also provided materials and a comment pertaining to previous concepts for the baggage road included in the packet. Obviously, if this road were there, the connection point would be probably closer for this structure to be served by the city sewer. Um, it being absent, then we are reverting back to the language that is in Chapter 28 for proximity to a point that can connect, um, with the commercially zoned property. Uh, if it's within 1,000 feet from a connection point or a road that contains it, um, then structures like this would be required to connect. I know that it is a long way, um, and that it might be cost prohibitive to do that. At this point, we'd be up against the ordinance language that is in there, and looking at the notion of, if you wanted to do a variance application, uh, proposing what your practical difficulty might be for that, um, that's, you know, a, a separate statute that we have to hurdle that through. I know that the, the connection was something that was discussed on the previous time that this application was on the agenda, um, subsequently withdrawn. But that element in ordinance language hasn't changed from then to now either. So it, it's not a, a new requirement at this point by any means, um, but getting around it takes a variance, um, and a practical difficulty. Um, all of those considerations and findings of facts to be established as, uh, in the previous agenda item for tonight. How do you, as the applicant, wish to proceed from here?
So, so what he's saying, if you, if you can't, if you're, if you're going, um, if you're going to try to do an easement, or I'm sorry, uh, we're talking about the easement for the roadway and the existing forest main connection. You have to do a variance request on top of that, so we as a commission can say, table it, and then you can go get that information or request that permit at the same time when we're running, when we're doing this again. Um, otherwise, it would be tough for us to say yes, because we have, I mean, we have Tom, and then we have Dave, um, raising the concerns about attachment and what our ordinance says, like, we can't just ignore an ordinance. Um, so that's what, that's what Steve's saying. Um, so we can, I mean, I can go through the regular process here, where I ask you to kind of describe the, describe it, and then we kind of make the feedback, but. It's up to you if you want to continue with that with the knowledge that we might say no, rather than just tabling it and being able to get all the information that we need to be able to make an application. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the typical process too would be to handle any variance asks that are pertinent to a conditional use permit application prior to, and. Ideally, get through an approval for a variance and then handle the, the conditional use permit. And so.
But we want to get, you want, you want, we want to have you all the information that you can get, so you're, you're doing what you need to, so you're not coming back to the meeting, you don't have what you need, so do you have any feedback you'd like from Dave or Tom? Because they're both here, so maybe you would like to ask him a few questions if, or if you have wanted some clarification on any issues?
What, what is the, as far as the variance, what are the conditions that have to be met for a variance to be approved?
Um, I'll put up the variance application here. So there's questions on the variance application, uh, pertaining to statute 462357, that identify, uh, zoning controls and how to get, um, how to propose what your practical difficulty is, is what it's referred to in ordinance or in, uh, statute. It's just loading here, so there's page two. So this will be the, the relevant statute that handles, um, applications that don't conform to ordinance standards. Um, the applicant should be prepared at public hearing to explain the unique hardship for the proposed variance. Um, practical difficulties are defined as, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the unofficial control. The plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner, and the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. One thing to consider there is economic considerations alone do not constitute a practical difficulty. Um, so, cost prohibition of a notion of connecting alone cannot get an application through for a variance approval. Um, that's just not something that the planning commission can corroborate on, is, yep, we agree, because there's a economic consideration here. There has to be more to it. What is the, what is the play? What is the practical difficulty? These are the questions that are kind of mirrored in the findings of facts the planning commission, um, discusses and, and finds upon motion of approval or denial. Some of them that are important are, you know, like, number one, what are the practical difficulties? Give us some examples in that. Um, some people choose to handwrite this in. Some people do see attached and paper out a narrative for that. And then number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property not caused by the property owner. Um, I'm not just highlighting these two out of any of the others, they're all important questions to have answered, but, um, they assist my planning commission then in coming up with a responsive finding of fact for an application that doesn't conform, so.
Do you have any questions?
Uh, I don't know, no, I guess not.
Okay. Do you have any, do you have any questions for, for Dave or Tom?
Yeah, both Tom and we're both here.
Not at this point, not without reviewing the variance. I mean, I did tell Stephen a week ago or so that, you know, I was not willing to connect to the sewer. It would have been nice to know that the variance would, would have needed to be addressed, and by chance, we could have submitted that, but. Um, I guess if you want to, if we can table this, um, until, um, we can submit the variance, if, if that's applicable to do, and come back.
I think on my staff report too, I had a, um, I would certainly encourage you to review the other analysis that I had in my staff report, such as parking, loading, clarification on certain things like that, if we do table this and result in that motion. One thing I think I had in here is there's an action deadline based on statute 1599. The application for the CUP was received on 8/5/25. 60 days from there, under statute, lands on 10/4/25. That will be before our next. That will be before our next regular meeting. Um, and so what I would do to get around that is administratively extend this and I can send you that in writing and an email just to extend the deadline under that statute so that we can be heard at the first meeting in October. Um, without, you know, getting under the gun on that statute, so, um, definitely a motion that could be made for tabling that and adjourning so that you can get an application and think about those questions and how you'd get around these. Um, that, that statutory hurdle of practical difficulty for variance consideration. Um, and then we could take this up again in, in a month's time.
I don't know how you're going to get around question number five though. You have to be aware of that, you're, come back for a variance and number five, the way things are now, it's, it's basically cost prohibitive that you want to do it. That's gonna, that's gonna, we're gonna, we'd have to turn down the variance.
I think what he, what Gary is alluding to is not question five on the application, it's question five on the findings of facts that we prepare. Does the need for a variance involve more than an economic consideration?
Okay. Do we have any other feedback for the applicant? Dave, did you get all your, your, you have any more open questions?
I think Stephen included
Okay.
our comments in their packet, so, you know, mainly we were commenting on the backage road routing and we have an approximation of where that would cross this property. So, um, in the future, that may be um, a possibility for a sewer route, but, um, otherwise it's existing that he would have to, you know, consider connecting to, um, with regard to a variance.
Yeah. Tom, did you have anything to add? Okay.
Is that location of the backage road that shows on there, does that, is that in conflict with the layout for this?
We had another drawing right there.
I haven't seen one that's overlaid.
Yeah.
So this is a estimate from Dave as well.
That's a sketch, just trying to sketch that in based on the
Red line there?
Yeah, okay. Based on the study that was completed. So we were just taking a look at their site plan and seeing how does that relate to that?
Yeah, okay.
You know, it's not perfect, it's just a sketch.
No, but it's not going right through the building, so. Okay.
Yeah, any avoidance of waste, I guess, in process and, um, keeping your long-term goals in mind is always my goal as a planner too, um, keeping your goals at the front of my mind and also trying to marry that together with the community goals as well in the comp plan and backage road proposals and figuring out, you know, how do we get everyone to the same finish line? Um, if this drawing from Dave is accurate, I mean, there's less impact other than to your driveway, um, for the notion of, you know, how you enter your property. Um, this drawing, you know, is rough, doesn't show what the actual width would be of a proposed backage road. Um, but it was a, a concept in, in and of itself, um, that hasn't come to fruition, but um, still, uh, I guess a goal that maybe attained as a community in the future. Um, about all I have for that.
Okay, so, uh, the applicant is asking to table at this time then?
Yes.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to table conditional use permit application zero, two, five, dash, two, five.
Sorry, Jim.
All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. All right, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move. Closing the public hearing.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, uh, accept the resignation of Danny Mendel. Yes, sorry, we reject. So what's, uh, what are we doing? What's the process now? Are we posting that?
They take a question?
Uh, the process moving forward for that would be to, um, accept the resignation, that acceptance from this committee would move forward to city council where we would motion to post the vacancy. Um, and advertise that, create an interview process, um, as designated by ordinance in our application form, and then pull that up to fill the seat.
Okay. And we nominate a vice chair?
Um.
Yes.
We're doing that now?
Yes.
I would nominate Sean Weldon as vice chair.
Sean, in his, uh,
He's not here, but to respond, but.
So in his note today that he did not, would not be in attendance tonight, he said that he was not interested in the vice chair position.
And I nominate Gary Harris for the vice chair. All right.
Gary stopped being on purpose last year, so. But to fill the, fill the void. You want to do it, John?
The who now?
You want to be vice chair?
The what?
Vice chair.
Why don't you be it?
Headmaster shot at it.
I did. Is there any choice?
I think so.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I know. Nominate John as vice chair.
That's kind of like, close, yeah, okay, no problem. How long is it?
How long is what?
Vice chair.
Long as you're on.
When did?
Just till, what, January?
Of what year?
Yeah, it's a re-elected position of chair and vice chair every year, oh, in January.
Okay, only for a couple of months.
Yeah, right. No, that's no problem.
Okay.
Okay, John accepts, I'm writing it bold, can't change.
The who?
Aye.
Aye.
I just voted for you.
Oh, thank you.
Motion carries. Uh, old business, ordinance discussions with Chris.
All right, so we have gotten some material from Chris Pence.
Yes.
We did not farm it up. I'll make a motion. That should be worded exactly the way Steve went to it. To accept the resignation of Danny Mendel.
I'll second. And then all those in favor, aye.
Thank you, I'm sorry, guys.
No problem.
Aye.
On to old business, Ice.
Yeah, old business, ordinance discussion.
So, uh, we got some materials in from Chris Pence. Um, he was contracted to do an ordinance comparison report for, um, um, growing counties ordinances to city of Nisswa's ordinances, attached in the packet for review, um, two documents, one of them being a report summary. Um, where Chris kind of provided an introduction, general summary of various sections, um, that could be, uh, discussed. Um, I think that they are all, you know, some things that I can agree with. Um, I, I guess at this point, it's time to start getting more into the details of what could change with the ordinances and gain discussion and conversation from the planning commission about what is the goal for moving forward on these things. Um, we have um, compliance inspection requirements that were listed as a difference. Um, currently Nisswa requires a compliance inspection for all properties, uh, with a septic system. The county requires a CI or compliance inspection only for um, for all permits and public hearing requests in the shoreline district, um, following Minnesota shoreline rule. So where we require it even in open space residential, more than a thousand feet from a lake or, uh, or from a riverine system, um, you know, the county is a little bit less restrictive. Chris's note there, uh, echoes that the city may want to consider updating the ordinance to follow the county ordinance in that regard. Um, another thing that is unique to the city of Nisswa is a principal structure, principal residential structure size requirement. Um, the city has minimum sizes for those structures while the county does not. Um, Chris's recommendation for that would be to, uh, not change that section of the ordinance. It makes sense in a more urban setting to have that control in place. Um, I tend to agree with, with that. Um, under section twenty dash eighty-nine, there are some key differences that he noted here, um, that the city addressed. The first is that lot line setbacks for septic system drain fields to property lines and wetland setbacks be addressed. Um, the county requirement for side yard setbacks is ten feet to the tank and the drain field, while the city requires setbacks of, uh, he's noting fifteen to thirty feet depending on the zoning district. Um, in that regard, I recall that we went through a ordinance revision this spring, um, altering that, so, um, we can strike the side yard setback aspect of that. Um, we did achieve his second statement there. It is his opinion that those setbacks are excessive and, and should be reduced to ten feet across all zoning districts. Uh, that I would mark as achieved. Um, the wetland setback for the city is thirty feet, the county is fifteen. Um, he says that it should be noted that there is no state standard for wetland setbacks and that can be a control established by each local government. Um, he feels that thirty feet is excessive and that a fifteen foot setback adequately protects the wetland and leaves more land available for development. Um, I think that fifteen feet does provide a element of, you know, screening of silts and fine particulate matters from entering those water systems, those wetland systems, um, open for a candidate for, for change. Um, does this body want me to go through each of these and seek discussion as we go through each? Or do you guys want me just to keep reading the material to you? I guess I, I want to kind of hear what you guys have to say about these at the same time, so. Anywhere that you guys want to feel free to pipe in, you know?
Yeah, I, I don't, I mean, we read through it, so I don't think you need to review everything. Um.
Any specific recommendations?
No, I thought, I thought the boardwalk would probably be a really good add to, to not a lot of roofs or canopies. We, we didn't really address that in the city ordinance, I think that would be a uh, overall, I, I, I agree with most of what he said here.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, so.
Okay, can highlight that one as a, you know, an emphasis too?
Yeah.
Um, any other elements that come out and strike you guys? Um, I know one thing that I encounter a lot of uh, in my day-to-day work with the community is accessory structure sizes. That would be the next item there, um, section twenty dash ninety-three. Um, the city has decided to regulate those a little bit more strictly than the county government has. Um, I feel like there may be other, other performance standards and, and, uh, not necessarily the performance standards, but dimensional standards in the ordinance that would protect from things or other mechanisms to, to regulate them differently. Um, how do you guys feel about the direction in current ordinance of accessory structures?
The county is what, is it like ten by sixteen? Is that what they're?
They allow for a couple freebie sizes. Um, I think it's, I think it was ten by sixteen or a hundred and sixty square feet.
That hundred and sixty.
In combinations of, uh, in the previous language, but I think that they upped that in non-shoreland areas, um. Since I've come to the city of Nisswa, I think it's been increased to, I think, three hundred and twenty square feet, a combination, two of those. Um, really can become impactful when you have, um, somebody that strictly doesn't understand local controls and ordinances and buys a carport, for example, from Menards, so uh, rather than having something that is a potential violation or enforcement action required, it does allow latitude for someone in my department to you know, say, okay, that's your freebie, you know, this is, you get one unpermitted structure up to a certain size requirement. Um, that could definitely be a potential opportunity, if that's the desire of the community in this board. Um, certainly something I can take forward to city council to gauge their appetite and start drafting language. Is there a size requirement that strikes you guys, um, as acceptable? The Hudson District perhaps even. Um, I know that it's kind of a nuanced question. Um, highway business has its own highway business and commercial, central business rather. Uh, both of those two districts have accessory structure size requirements that are unique in our ordinance. I don't know if that was highlighted directly in um, in his notes here, but it does not seem that it is, but I've noticed language like that, so taking feedback from you guys and then coming forward with revision of language. Using that feedback would be great.
Um, is, are these, um, the analysis from Chris, is this being, is this entire document being given to the city council to review for their opinion as well?
It is, and it was given at the, at a recent special council meeting.
Okay.
Um, with the notion that it was coming here. It was a open-ended agenda item for that meeting and so I included it into the packet for them.
Okay. Well, it doesn't seem like there's any one way or another opinion on the sides for the accessory structure here, so. I think maybe it would be best if we got feedback from the city council and then we can proceed.
Open the open the recommendations from them as well, seems.
Okay.
If. Any other sections that were in the summary that you want to call out or in the, um, more in-depth ordinance comparison chart? That people want to hone in on in this discussion?
We've had a really good relationship with Chris in the past and, on our land use ordinances, you know, when we were working on him for a couple of years and and, uh, man, he's the, he, he certainly is the expert on all of this stuff. For us not to go with what his recommendations on here would be, would be a mistake.
I agree. So, I guess that's their feedback. We, we agree with his recommendations.
Awesome, all right. Fantastic, I mean, yes.
Yeah, uh, city's planner, city planners report?
Awesome. All right, so in the month of Au- August, um, we've had twelve land use permits approved. Um, had one that, uh, was an after-the-fact septic and guest quarters conversion permit issued. Um, it's kind of a success as a result of, um, ongoing enforcement action and, you know, didn't get a permit for this, you need one, so that's kind of a celebratory thing that has been fulminating, um, over the last year. Um, we had also just the run-of-the-mill single-family residences with garages and, and sewer connections. Um, some residential additions, uh, demolition and, and vacating of a, of a lot. Um, rain is starting. Um, fences, just some general stuff. Um, other than that, uh, nothing super unique from my department at this time.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries, we are adjourned.